I fought with that guy so hard, he caught me like, like almost.
So I don't know about Corla, but Jason texted me. Yeah, he was rubbing it in. All right. Um. According to my handy dandy walk. All right. Uh, I will call the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting to order. Um, prior to the approval of the agenda, just, uh, this is more of a formality. Uh, because we will be voting, I, I would entertain or appreciate if we could add under, uh, Roman numeral six, new business, because technically if we're gonna vote, it should be a business item. Other than that, are there any additions, changes, or corrections to the agenda? Right. Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Mr. Dana, Mr. Dana with the motion.
Second.
Ms. Blackmar with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November eighth, twenty twenty-two.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I second.
All right, Ms. Blackmar with the motion, uh, Ms. Rosenberg with the second, we'll give you the third, Mr. Dana. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we will open the floor for, uh, public comments, not, uh, public comments that are not related to any agenda items. So if you have something you would like to speak about that is not on tonight's agenda, feel free to come up to the podium and identify yourself. All right, seeing no motion from our friends in the crowd, we will move on to reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staff. Mr. Dana, could we start with you on, uh, any reports you have?
Yes, the CIC, uh, had a very vigorous meeting. I would say that they concentrated in large measure on Western Knolls and the twenty, forty-some acres there. I thought it was a productive discussion, I felt that all the voices were heard. Uh, but that was the tenor of, of that meeting, uh, in my memory, thank you.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Um, I don't believe I'm assigned to any other boards or commissions, so nothing to report.
Easiest report ever. Vice Chair Rosenberg.
Um, so we met, uh, housing met, uh, last month, and we did a lot of, um, kinda going over, uh, kinda past business, and which, um, then led us to, um, a discussion about, um, kinda like what was important, um, and what we wanted to see a nonprofit perhaps do, um, in our community, which is something that, um, I'm on, um, a subcommittee with, um, some other folks with, with, um, Jessica Green. So that is proceeding, I did a couple of meetings related to that, and, and so that is what I have to report.
All right, thank you. Dr. Pritherich.
Okay, um, so I'll report first on boards and commissions, our Parking and Transportation Advised Board did not meet, but we're thinking about what we wanna do next year. Um, just a kind of an update on the Climate Action Steering Committee has been working kind of in parallel with the Comprehensive Plan on a Climate Action Plan. We, when we signed on to the Global Covenant of Mayors, one of the obligations is you have to develop a Climate Action Mitigation Plan, how you're gonna drive down your missions, and a separate element, which is a resilience, a vulnerability assessment, resilience. So, separate plan, but thankfully our Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Planning court rates a lot of those key elements, which is really a good best practice, because we can't get to neutrality without going through a comprehensive plan. But there still will be a separate Climate Action Plan that will be, I think, like, I guess our, we'll talk more about the Oxford Tomorrow Plan, but that might be a big umbrella, and there might be other plans that kinda follow along either on more specific themes or more specific geographic areas. So I think that one of the first ones to come down the pipe might be our Climate Action Plan early, uh, in the first half of twenty twenty-three. We've been kinda dialing in some strategies and tactics, um, so, uh, just a kind of update on that. And then, um, from council, you may know that we've done one of the first moratoriums that I recall in my time in the city of Oxford, uh, for vape and tobacco shops. Moratorium are really great tools, we've happened to use them, but it was time to use it in those circumstance. So I guess, well, the Planning Commission might be the board where some of the, it's possible some of the tobacco regulation will come through Planning Commission, for example, it's conditional use. So, thank you for staff for acting as quickly as, not quickly enough, but that was, it just, the straw broke the camel's back at a certain point, it was time, so.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Blackmar?
And I am on the Parking and Transportation Board, and, um, that we didn't meet, I guess right now our meters are free uptown. So I know people are excited about that.
What was the last thing you said?
I, I understand that our meters are free during the holiday season.
Thank you. Um, uh, so HAPC meets tomorrow, we are, gosh, what on our third or fourth, um, revisit of Ten North Beach over here for, um, uh, one-story addition to the existing, um, new Princess Theater. So, um, based on what I saw, I think there's been a lot of movement, uh, forward, and, um, Sam Perry deserves a lot of credit for, for moving that, um, from, uh, you know, some disjointed conversations to, I think we have three choices, if I remember correctly. Um, so, much appreciated there. So, full disclosure, um, this book, uh, all the Planning Commission staff, uh, we got a copy. HAPC is pretty adamant and compassionate, or, and passionate about not only the history of our town, but the historic architecture of our town, and we were talking in a meeting, um, months ago, and, uh, Chris and I kinda had this light bulb, and then, uh, at Rotary, um, Valerie had presented, uh, about the book. So, um, full disclosure, I went to the Layton Library and bought them months ago, and they may have been sitting in a box in my study. And if Sam hadn't reminded me about it, we'd probably still be in a box in my study. So, um, we just thought it was really important to bridge the gap, uh, it's a good book, um, especially as we're, uh, tonight talking about, uh, the, the plan for our city moving forward, it's apropos that we have something looking, uh, back. So, uh, we just thought, Chris and I thought that was just something that, um, was really nice for planning to have, and spoiler, uh, you guy, Alex, you'll get one tomorrow.
So who paid for them?
I did, Chris and I.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, that is really, really, really kind.
Yeah.
I'm generous.
I'm generous.
So, um.
Best chair ever.
I have one in favor of that.
Uh, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, thank you for that, those books, that was very nice. Um, I wanted to report to the commission, I was able to attend the Oxford Township Trustees Meeting last night, and provide an update on Comprehensive Plan, and it was, I think, well-received, just had a few minutes to share with them on how things have gone, and hopefully plant a seed for potentially future discussions. Uh, so that was good, and in that same vein, I'll say also, uh, staff wanted to report that we've had a handful of, uh, inquiries about, uh, potential development on the periphery of the city. Uh, so it'd be very important for this commission to be thinking about one of the goals that you'll maybe hear about later tonight, about an annexation policy, um, and potentially even a joint land use plan with, uh, surrounding jurisdictions. So it's coming at a good time potentially, that we would have interest in annexation right after potentially recommending and adopting a comprehensive plan, so, good timing.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Uh, nothing further to add, but I am looking forward to introducing the Comprehensive Plan item on the agenda here in a few seconds.
Just trying to think of how to make that seamless, but I can't. All right, um, so moving on to our, our one and only, uh, new business item, uh, this is different than our normal procedures, but I think it would be for consistency fair for us to go through and adjourn to public session. Allow Mr. Moore to present, allow, um, anyone from the public to speak, and then we'll, uh, we'll go about. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to public session.
I shall.
Mr. Dana with the motion? Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, we are in public session, Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, commission members. So, tonight marks an exciting milestone for the legacy of planning here in Oxford. For our one and only major item on the agenda tonight, um, is to formally consider adoption of the brand-new Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, and needless to say, it's been a long time coming, leading up to this point here tonight, uh, as city staff began preparations to update this Comprehensive Plan as early as November of twenty twenty. So it's now two years later, and we're very proud to present the document that's before you for consideration tonight. Uh, believe it or not, Oxford Tomorrow has been the name of our past two comprehensive plans, the first being adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, and then, of course, our most recent plan, which is our current one on the books, was adopted in November of two thousand eight. Um, so, we are long overdue for an update, and it's been an exciting process to witness, to see this new draft plan and vision come to fruition. Undertaking an update to the Comprehensive Plan is certainly no small task. It involves countless hours of work and preparation, as well as hundreds of hours of involvement from community members. Um, I wanna thank everyone who contributed in some way, shape, or form over the past year and a half to help shape our new plan for the future, and I especially wanna extend thanks to the hard-working and dedicated individuals serving on our thirty-member Steering Committee, who had convened on nine separate occasions since May of last year. Um, lastly, I wanna thank our hired consultants from planning and design firm MKSK from Columbus, Ohio. Um, they have been remarkable to work with, and the plan that is presented before you tonight would not have been possible without their professional expertise, dedication, and creativity. Um, so with us tonight are Principal Chris Herman and Associate Sarah Lilly, um, who have been with us every step of the way, and I'm going to turn it over to Sarah momentarily for her to provide a general overview of the planning process that we've undertaken, a summary of some of the key plan recommendations by chapter or by element of the plan. And then I imagine following that, there will be an opportunity for some Q and A, and then, once all that's through, I imagine that'll be the appropriate time for, um, any comments from the public. So, uh, with that, I will now turn things over to Sarah, uh, for a summary overview of the new Oxford Tomorrow.
Good evening, commission members. Uh, so, um, yeah, I'm very grateful, this is kind of a full-circle moment, I feel like, for, for me a little bit, to get to present this plan tonight, um, having studied urban planning and geography at Miami University, and Chris Harmon here is also a, an alum too, so this is really special. Um, I will note that throughout the, the slides, I included page numbers, so where possible, you know, I try to reference back to where you can find the full content, um, that we're talking about in the plan document, um, tonight, so. Uh, really quickly, you know, like Zach mentioned, this plan wouldn't have been possible without the more than eight hundred voices that we heard throughout the course of the project. Um, we utilize a number of different methods to, um, try to have broad community engagement from public, three public meetings, online and paper surveys, our thirty-member Steering Committee, who are very dedicated, online activities, um, and all of that really directly influenced, um, all the plan recommendations, so. Um, oh, sorry, going too fast. So like I mentioned, we did have three public meetings, um, all, all over the course of this year, so starting back in February, and these meetings really did kinda build on one another. So the first meeting was really intended as a listening session to kind of present kinda what we found to, um, be the existing conditions in Oxford, and also to hear, uh, from the public about their ideas and their vision for the future. The second workshop, back in April, um, we presented kind of our initial draft plan framework, goals, objectives, and then most recently in mid-November, we had the Plan Open House, where we presented the full, all the actions, there were a hundred and sixty-two of them, and asked folks to review them and to prioritize them. So, um, there are a lot of actions, but we do try to, to highlight what the key ones are for the community at least, um, moving forward. So, uh, like I mentioned, we, we had really great turnout throughout the course of the project, which is not always the case in a lot of communities we work in, I mean, we had steady turnout throughout all the public meetings, which is really great to see, um, lots of great feedback online through the surveys, um, and even throughout the course of, you know, this COVID pandemic, people still showed up, the community clearly is engaged and interested in, in the future of Oxford. So, city staff also did a wonderful job getting the word out about all the different ways that people could participate, and to make sure that we were, um, you know, as inclusive as possible. And the Steering Committee too, um, I know we've got a few Steering Committee members, um, here tonight, really helped to act as liaisons to this process and spread the word to their networks as well, so, really trying to, to get as robust input as possible. Um, and we, you know, through this, we believe that the plan is really reflective in, of the community's input, and sometimes we even took verbatim comments from that second public workshop and transformed them into plan recommendations. So we really hope that the whole community sees their input in this plan too. Um, so, it's really been awesome to work with all the community members in this process. So, as I mentioned, um, there are a hundred and sixty-two actions, which are at the bottom of the pyramid, and that's really the, the bulk of the plan, the recommendations. The actions are not all just actions necessarily, there might be projects, they might be policies, they might be programs. Um, but all of, the plan framework really starts with one aspirational vision, which again was crafted and with help from the community, eight goals that follow those, um, eight topic areas for the plan, objectives, which really help to refine the goal statement, and then all the actions that help, um, to, uh, provide more direction on how we can actually achieve those objective and, objectives and goals. So, actions can be quite broad, but then the, they can also vary a lot in terms of how they might be implemented, how much they might cost, how long they might take to implement, how complex they are, if they're, you know, a project involving multiple partners and funding sources, it might take years, um, it might be quite complex, but they're still worth stating in a comprehensive plan. Um, also, actions are gonna vary in terms of, this is something we talked a lot about in this process, and how much the city can control versus how much they can influence, and so we tried to highlight that kind of dichotomy almost a little bit in the plan, um, and we really tried to have a good variety of actions within all those different variables. So, it's a plan that is visionary, but it's also achievable. Um, there are gonna be things in there that you could accomplish pretty soon, and there might be things that are gonna be a little bit more of a long-term goal, or a, um, long-term recommendation. Uh, so like I mentioned, the vision statement, which is found on page thirty-five, is really this aspirational statement, um, talking about how, what, the Oxford that we wanna be, Oxford Tomorrow. And this statement kinda focuses on the qualities of the community, and these are, um, kinda more broad qualities, right? But in, including values like equity and inclusion, environmental sustainability, fiscal responsibility, um, community well-being, things like that, um, that we heard a lot throughout this process. The goals are also, uh, a little bit aspirational, but they kind of describe more of a desired outcome or a desired future. So, um, Oxford Tomorrow will embody smart growth and have quality places. Oxford Tomorrow will have housing opportunities for everyone, which was a big thing we heard. Oxford Tomorrow will be a sustainable Oxford, um, so that's kind of how we view these goal statements. Um, and then the objectives and actions really help to refine those a bit more. So, um, you all as a, as Planning Commission will be using the plan probably pretty often, we hope, um, more than a lot, a lot of folks too. Um, so we wanna kinda focus on how, you know, you've already seen the plan, so some of this might not be too new to you of, um, how the plan is kinda structured, but it's worth kind of stating, um, that the plan is broken into four chapters, and the, the bulk of the plan is really in that, uh, chapter three and chapter four with the recommendations, and then the implementation, which is kind of how you get things done, um, how to be good stewards of the plan, how to use and monitor and regularly update the plan. Um, so the, those are where, um, you'll probably likely kind of flip directly to the implementation chapter or the recommendations chapter, find what you're looking for. The introduction and the, really provides essential background information, community engagement really summarizes what we did and what we heard and who we talked to throughout this process. So the recommendations chapters, um, uh, the recommendations chapter, excuse me, is split into eight sections that are, um, ba, uh, broken down by those eight topics that I mentioned, and they really follow a consistent kind of format, so it's hopefully pretty easy to read and understand, um, each of those sections. So, it starts off, um, you know, the beginning of each section is really gonna start off with that goal statement, kind of a broad, uh, introduction about why that topic is important for Oxford, then moving into, um, data, analysis findings, uh, trends that are relevant to that topic in the existing conditions section, and then the, um, really important stuff is over in the recommendations, um, for each, uh, section within the recommendations chapter. And we've tried to make it kind of visually interesting and hopefully a little bit exciting to read too, through images and case studies and diagrams where possible, um, so it's not all text, but there is a lot of descriptive text in there to really try to, um, explain a bit more what the recommendations entail. And then in the implementation matrix, you'll probably see that it also follows that kind of similar structure or pattern. So all of the actions are, have their own row in the implementation matrix, and then we try to provide some, um, helpful information on how you guys can all, uh, implement and make these actions a reality, um, with that city role column describing, again, that control versus influence dichotomy, whether it's something the city can do, um, and kinda check it off, or whether they, you all will have to bring lots of other partners to the table to accomplish it. The timeframe being specific or ongoing, whether it's discreet or whether it doesn't really have a defined end date, and then the potential partners, um, just gives you a starting point of who potentially could be involved in that process, um, of implementation. And then we did, um, add a community priority indicator, which I'll talk about what we found from the community, community priorities from the open house process. Uh, the implementation chapter, like I mentioned, um, has a section in there about plan stewardship, because the adoption process, um, which we're starting tonight with this meeting, is really kind of the beginning of using the plan. Obviously, there's been a lot of work to get to this point, but this plan will hopefully last you at least ten years, um, and hopefully will influence all these other processes that are going on, the Climate Action Plan and other supplementary plans that are, um, you know, recommended in Oxford Tomorrow, like a Parks and Rec Master Plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, or transportation plans, or specific, um, geographic area plans or focus area plans. Um, we hopefully highlight in this section as well how the Comprehensive Plan can be used along with all the other regulatory tools that the city has, uh, like zoning codes and other codes, as well as other ongoing or, um, governance processes like budgeting, um, things like that. So, this is just kind of, um, a graphic to illustrate that point, but we do hope that, um, the plan will be used regularly throughout all these processes. And this graphic also helps to illustrate how the plan can be continuously monitored throughout the course of a year, so, um, continually monitored and updated and reported on, um, so you might, you know, every year, at the end of the year, you might get a report on, uh, from staff on progress that's been accomplished since the plan's been, you know, was adopted, or, um, you might get a mid-year report, or you might have discussions about priorities. Council might have discussions about priorities, um, every year, things like that. So we, we try to illustrate that point, um, really strongly in the implementation chapter in the plan stewardship section. So, uh, obviously, um, you all probably reference the Future Land Use Map quite frequently from the two thousand eight plan. Um, it has been updated with this planning effort, um, and we kinda took this character-based approach to the Future Land Use Map. So there are twelve character types, um, that are shown here on the screen, and, uh, a lot of these are existing, um, and a lot of them are pretty intuitive, things like campus or preserves and green space, um, are acknowledging what's already working well and what's already existing in Oxford, and then there's really four that we've kind of focused in on, um, throughout this, kind of, once we had the character types drafted, um, where there might be a little bit of change or recommended change or improvement, um, for the future. So those are the ones that are highlighted here, um, the urban neighborhood, the mixed-use center, the employment corridor, and the employment center. So, the urban neighborhood, um, we've gone back and forth on, on the name for this one, because I think some people have reactions to different words, but, um, we landed on the term urban neighborhood, because it's describing a lot of traditional urban qualities that a lot of our neighbor, our historic neighborhoods already embody. Um, but this, in this case, it'd be likely happening on a, in a new development, right? On a greenfield site or a redevelopment site. So we wanna, um, focus on a lot of those qualities that create walkable, distinct, unique, special places with the urban neighborhood, and that's really what this is trying to accomplish, and it's also trying to accomplish a lot of the, um, issues we heard around housing in Oxford of this desire for people to live in a place that's like the Mile Square. We heard that a lot, that people want, um, to be able to live with their family in the Mile Square, but that, we know that that is a difficult reality given the market conditions. So, something like an urban neighborhood is trying to accomplish that, um, goal. And you'll see there's quite a few parcels on the Future Land Use Map that are coded, urban neighborhood, because again, this would also help to accomplish, um, some of the other housing needs that we learned about through the Housing Needs Assessment, which was a really great resource to have as we were doing this work. Um, and it's also focused on creating a quality public realm too, of connected streets, connected sidewalks and trails, having green, public green space, things like that. Um, so different housing types could be included in the urban neighborhood, even some small-scale retail or mix, small-scale mixed-use development, but it's really a neighborhood, um, at the end of the day. The mixed-use center already, um, you know, you already have good examples of this in Oxford, like with Stewart Square. Um, so this is trying to maybe think about where there might be more opportunities for that type of place, um, in the future, uh, potentially with some redevelopment sites along the South Locust Corridor. Um, and this is really just creating a mix of different commercial, retail, hospitality uses along with maybe a, some multifamily, um, some civic spaces or parks and open spaces, and again, creating that really high-quality sense of place through the mixed-use center. The employment corridor, um, again, we kinda focused this along major employment corridors that already exist in Oxford, like College Corner Pike. that already exist in Oxford, like College Corner Pike, um, a little bit at seven thirty-two. Um, so this is maybe spaces that are, were developed kind of around and au- you know, the I- the automobile, um, but that maybe we can kind of reimagine to make them a little bit more friendly for people. Um, so making sure that these spaces are connected with sidewalks, um, maybe thinking about creating some gathering spaces or making sure parking lots are connected. So, this isn't like a complete transformation from what's existing, but it's just thinking about where there might be room for improvement, and certainly if there were sites along an employment corridor that were to redevelop, you know, we wanna make sure that those, um, are exhibiting again, really good uh, planning and design principles. We uh, know that economic development is a really key issue for the city, um, making sure that you have a diversified tax base. And to do that, you need to have spaces for new businesses to go, and so we see that employment center category being kind of that space for maybe, um, office businesses, medical, um, l- maybe, uh, you could also do some mixed-use commercial retail there as well, but this is where if you, um, an employer, a larger employer is trying to move to Oxford, they might look first at an employment center site. And again, exhibiting a lot of the qualities that carry throughout a lot of these categories, the mixed-use center, the urban neighborhood, but focused mostly on employment-based uses, again, to diversify, um, the local tax base. So, all of these kind of come together on the future land use map shown here. And we have, um, some larger versions printed out if you wanna take a closer look. And again, like I mentioned, um, actually if I click to the next slide. This is really where those four categories that I've talked a lot about, um, where you'll find them. So, that tan color being the urban neighborhood, again, there's quite a few parcels, um, coded as urban neighborhood. There's the mixed-use center there, kind of focused along South Locust Corridor. Um, the employment corridor focused along twenty-seven, a little bit at seven thirty-two as well. And the employment center being areas that are already, um, have developed or started to develop as an employment center or are already zoned for commercial use, so. That's, um, the future land use map, and then we also did identify, there, it's a little hard to see on the screen here, but there's five focus areas, which are there in the hatched, um, areas on the screen. And these are areas that might require a little bit more planning and thinking. Um, they might be changing in the next, you know, five, ten years, so it's important to kind of watch these sites, think about how they might be, um, re-envisioned in the future, reimagined in the future. And, you know, being that there's the hatch over them, the future or the land use designation in these areas might be a little bit more flexible, and we do describe that a bit in the comp- in the full document as well, um, a little bit more about these focus area sites. But maybe there's a focus area plan that happens for some of these, um, things like that. So then, uh, like I mentioned, at the third and final public open house, um, the public meeting, we had asked the community to review all the hundred and sixty-two plan recommendations and tell us which ones, which five, I should say, from each topic were their priority. Um, and it was really interesting to see which ones rose to the top. Um, so, you'll, we did this both in-person and we also had an online version of this as well for folks who couldn't attend the in-person meeting. And so, if you take all of the, the priorities that arose, you get forty recommendations. Um, so I'll kind of go over some of those as well here. So, um, the five for land use and development, a lot of these were actually kind of broad policies in a way, um, less of a discreet action that you can take, but, um, things like making sure new development has enough, you know, green space and open space, favoring more of those kind of qualities that I've been talking about, the traditional urban neighborhood qualities over more auto-oriented or suburban qualities, um, was one. Uh, thinking about how we can preserve and reuse historic buildings, how we can maybe take advantage of potential, um, transportation opportunities to focus development around certain nodes. So, these were really interesting to see that they were mostly kind of more policies than actions, um. But, uh, I think it's good to know that the community also values these, you know, planning principles in a way too. Uh, for mobility, we did hear a lot throughout the course of the project about mobility, um, and all the exciting things that are in the news about mobility. Um, so we heard a lot about Amtrak, we heard a lot about, uh, the oats loop, um, the multimodal transit facility. So, these are our very top of mind for people, so I think we see that here with some of these priorities, with the, um, idea to establish passenger rail service for Oxford with Amtrak. Um, knowing that, you know, again, that's not eh, within your direct control, that's within your influence maybe. Um, thinking about, we heard a lot about the truck route that goes right through Uptown, maybe trying to explore opportunities for, um, finding an alternate truck route to reduce traffic uptown. Um, expanding the oats loop and things like working to improve pedestrian and cyclist mobility as well and making sure that that's a huge priority for the city moving forward. So, those were really interesting to see that those were the priority actions for mobility. Again, at housing was probably one of the number-one issues we heard about in this plan, and that's kind of the case for a lot of communities we're working in right now. It's a top of mind for a lot of people. Um, we had the amazing housing needs assessment and all the data and findings from that to work off of for this plan, which was really awesome because that had tangible recommendations. It was, um, really helped to inform the development of this section especially, um, when thinking about. But then we also, I should say, we also did kind of combine the, those recommendations with what we heard from the community from the start, which was we want more housing options, we want more housing options for, um, different income levels. We heard a lot about affordability or housing attainability. Um, we wanna be able to live in Oxford if we can't right now, so we heard a lot about these issues. And I think the, the data with what we heard really came together to create a robust set of recommendations in the housing section, um, to hopefully, um, start to accomplish some of those ideas. So, things like, um, taking a closer look at zoning regulations for allowing more diversity of housing and more density of housing in certain areas, different uh, living arrangements, allowing for ADUs where, uh, accessory dwelling units in certain areas. Um, supporting, we heard, you know, we wanna make sure that Oxford is supporting housing for all people, unhoused, um, people with mental health issues or substance use issues. Um, so really supporting s- uh, transitional housing or supportive, permanent supportive housing for those folks. Um, thinking about that nonprofit which could help with attainable housing or affordable housing. So, I think it's good, again, it's good to confirm that these are really the priorities for the community as well. And again, hopefully we'll, um, provide some direction one, uh, as a place to get started 'cause there are a lot of actions in some of these sections. We know, um, like I mentioned, economic development's really important so that the city of Oxford has a tax base that, um, so you can continue to provide high-quality services for the community, and to do that, we need to focus on, um, you know, business retention and attraction. Um, so I think that shows up here in some of these, uh, priorities. But a big one, um, to start off with might be the economic development strategic plan, which would help to identify concrete tools or incentives that the city could use to really focus on how to attract more, uh, business or diversity of business to Oxford. Um, and also focusing on things like down here, um, that will drive local tourism and generate spending from out- people who are outside of Oxford as well, in Oxford. With, uh, sustainability, that's a new, uh, section for this plan, a new topic for this plan, although it was definitely included in past plans, but now it's called out in its own section. And like the, um, uh, Commissioner Prithrich mentioned, um, I almost called you Dr. Prithrich, sorry. Um, a lot of these recommendations in this sustainability section really do kind of speak to a lot of the climate action planning work too that's being done as well, so. Um, the kind of ones that stand out here, uh, focus on, um, incentives or programs that would allow for folks to, uh, use alternative energy on their properties, um, which there's certainly gonna be a lot of those, especially with a lot of the federal, um, legislation that's been passed recently. Thinking about how we can revisit building codes or zoning codes to make sure that our, the whole community is resilient for the future, and, um, thinking about how we can just continue to be a really green place from the tree canopy to our streets, um, green in terms of landscaping, but also green in terms of, of sustainability as well, so. Then, um, culture and recreation focuses also on, on parks as well. Um, we heard loud and clear from the get-go that my, uh, excuse me, Oxford's parks and recreation assets, including Miami natural areas, are really a key reason for the high quality of life here. And so, we wanna focus on preserving those and improving those where possible. Um, so, one of the things we heard about a lot through, from the community was the development of a community center that could be used year-round, um, but that maybe would also have more services than just recreation, that could be a place for social services, um, or other types of facilities. We heard about, um, really wanting to improve access to our, uh, parks and recreation facilities through trails, but also just working with partners to make sure everyone's aware of what's available to them, that, um, everyone can go enjoy Miami's natural areas as well as Oxford Community Park and, and vice versa, so. And we also talked a bit about in this section, um, in the culture and recreation section about public art as, um, a way to kind of, um, enhance Oxford's unique identity. The, um, community well-being is also a new term for this plan, though not a new idea. Again, a lot of these were covered in the last plan, but we've just maybe reframed them a little bit in this plan. So, this section is focused on community services, um, but also things like diversity, equity, inclusion, public safety, public health services, things like that. So, um, we heard, uh, from the community and from, uh, some of the stakeholders we interviewed about some areas where maybe service provision is lacking or we need to expand it, including, um, mental health services, substance use, um, services for folks who are suffering from substance use disorder, um, the need for more childcare services and elder care services. So, that's really also kind of a rose to the top during this prioritization activity, um, that we can see here that those, those ideas are really top of mind again for the community. Um, so that was really interesting to see. And then finally, utilities is where we talk about all the physical infrastructure that's needed to ensure the city runs smoothly and properly. Um, some of these again won't be, are, are things that maybe have been already been discussed or in the works for a while, including the, um, water softening, uh, project as well as, um, broadband, expanding broadband access. Again, there's, um, been a lot of federal legislation in that regard for, um, for the past few years. Um, but also focusing on, when it comes to utilities, how we can make sure we're, um, protecting our surface and groundwater supply, um, for a lot of different reasons, and that also ties back to sustainability. Um, so, at the bottom there, there's things like, you know, using low-impact development techniques, um, and stream corridor protections to make sure that we're protecting our water quality, um, for the future, so. I'll happily answer any questions. I know that's a lot of information, and a lot of this might not be, might be quite repetitive at this point for some of you, but, um, happy to take any questions.
Just, just for revisiting, this is a good time for questions about the plan or the presentation, um, where we can entertain public comments in a turn, and then we can discuss anything, our recommendations to answers, so.
No, I guess I just wanna hear, I mean, I'm, someone else has been involved in this process a lot from the beginning. I'm curious for folks from the public, so I'll hold off for now, other than just thanks to a process that's been really great, um, I, you know, I, obviously I teach planning, but I talk about the plan is about, plan, the value in the plan is the plan, but even more so, it's the consensus building along the way. And my impression is, is that like, I felt like I knew my community and this plan really confirmed like, I think we do all share values and it came out through the process, so. So, I, I'm excited to talk about what can go next, but we'll start with that.
So, I, I have a question, but I guess it's probably more of a clarification. Mr. Moore and I were talking about this, so, um, with the, and, and urban designation, of course, that, that, uh, could be interpreted in different ways, but with the outline or undeveloped parcels, um, in the future land use map, um, could you, could you dive a little bit more into, um, maybe some of the highlights? 'Cause one of the concerns I shared with Mr. Moore is, um, from a transportation aspect. There was, there was quite a lot of excitement, let's say, when the pool moved out to the outskirts of town. Um, a lot of people thought the other county RTAs just sent a bus out there and didn't realize there are costs and staffing and things that go with it, so. Um, could you explain a little bit more about maybe some of the, the urban or the more dense concepts in the outskirts?
Yeah.
And how those tie to, it looked like there was synonymous development in the core. I know you and I had talked about, uh, the area around Kroger and the apartments, how that was an existing core. So, could you, could you explain a little bit more?
Yeah, um, so, it's a great, it's a great question, and I see your concerns from a transportation standpoint. I think we would certainly focus, um, you know, with the urban neighborhood, we wanna make sure it's connected into existing transportation networks. So, we wouldn't want, we would discourage, strongly discourage cul-de-sacs, cul-de-sac, and, um, you know, uh, stub streets, things like that within the urban neighborhood. I know the term urban might sound like it would be super dense, though we didn't define densities within this, uh, future land use plan, that's more of a, a zoning code, um, issue, but, um, I think this was a response to, you know, wanting to see qualities like what you have in the Mile Square, which is this place that has tree-lined streets and sidewalks and, you know, connected, a connected streetwork network, an alleyway system with sometimes rear-loaded garages that help promote, you know, a safe walking environment on a sidewalk, things like that. Um, we heard that people want to live in a place like that, a lot in this plan, planning process, I should say. Um, but we know that it's going to be difficult for the Mile Square to not just be predominantly student rentals, just given, you know, market limitations, market conditions. And so, this is an opportunity to create that housing type and that type of place, but in the areas where, you know, you kid, could have new development occur. Um, certainly, you know, if there were to be housing in the mixed-use center, that would be great too. And that is something that obviously is a little bit more walkable to Uptown and to campus than some of these areas that are maybe more of a, I would call it maybe a lot of like a family-focused neighborhood or, you know, it's more connected into places like the high school campus, middle school campus. Um, it's more, a little more connected into, you know, the community park, um, some of these other community amenities that might be a little less geared towards Miami University students, if that makes sense. Um, another thing, you know, it's not on this map, but the- Um, another thing, you know, it's not on this map, but the oats loop prevent, prov- uh presents a great opportunity to create a uh multimodal network for bike commuting or walking. Um, and it could connect into some of these neighborhoods as well. Um, to address some of those concerns about, you know, maybe they're a little bit more in the outskirts of town, but I think um, you know, that there's already been improvements along, obviously, US twenty-seven south with the bike lane. Um, so we would certainly encourage, um, you know, multimodal facilities on any roadway. And we do have a section, I didn't highlight in this presentation, but we do have a section talking about roadway character in the mobility chapter as well. And that really does tie in a lot, I think, to this land use section. Um, so uh, does that answer your question? It kind of was all over the place, but.
Oh, it did. Um, and I had one other question, and this is more, uh, I read through and couldn't find it, so I'm just, I need to be pointed. Um, the priority areas, I think you guys are spot on. Uh, those are the areas we tended to have long discussions about. The one that threw me for a loop and I couldn't find the answer was the airport.
Got it. Yeah, we, um, yeah, we didn't create, we didn't describe in detail each of the individual focus areas, and that's a really good question about the airport. So we had heard, you know, um, or I should say, there's been changes, I guess, with the airport property with Miami, I believe, selling it to CBG. Um, so it's just kind of this question mark as to what Miami's, you know, long-term plan is for that site. And then um there are also state incentives um that have been released recently um focusing on advanced air mobility research. And so potentially, you know, you could explore opportunities in partnership with Miami or Miami could explore opportunities to think about how to use that site for economic development purposes too, and thinking about how we can create, make Oxford a place of aviation innovation or research or, you know, an economy or economic development, um, was kind of the idea there.
Yeah, because it's university property and it's half in township, half in the city, and I'm like, I must have missed something there.
It's sort of a, it's sort of a question mark on the map.
Some, yeah, just, there's some planning going on right now with Miami, but some of what Miami is planning could have spillover effects into surrounding areas. And it could very well be the most important economic development piece in our, you know, we have a limited amount of like flex, you know, office industrial and and they have potential vision for some really cool stuff out there. So anyway, it's good that we've identified that we need to talk about.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Mr. Dan.
I have a a question which might be very detailed and as the question goes in the weeds, but I've I've raised this question with actually one member of staff. And here's the question. The question is about NOAA.
Hmm.
Okay. And my question is, what is an example of a NOAA? And how does working with a NOAA bring about desirable results? I mean, it's, it's just sort of slipped in there.
Yeah.
But it seems to me since housing is such an important feature of what we're doing, that to understand naturally occurring, what that really means.
Yeah.
And how it can be described is what I'm looking at, and I I appreciate it for speaking to that.
Yeah, so NOAA, naturally occurring affordable housing, um NOAA as the acronym, is kind of a newer concept, I would say, in the housing sphere. Um, and it's, it's described as, you know, um, housing where it's not publicly subsidized affordable housing. It's uh housing that's maybe oftentimes older housing developments. Um, or oftentimes maybe less desirable housing develop, seen as less desirable housing developments. So the rents are usually lower than the market rate, housing rents.
Okay.
Um, and so obviously with what we heard a lot about in this process, affordable housing being a key concern for Oxford, you know, it's important to know kind of what developments are, do fall into that NOAA category, which that's a recommendation of the plan is to identify which properties in Oxford are categorized as NOAA. But just off the cuff, I would say first places you would look would probably be the uh manufactured home park on College Corner Pike. Um, I know we've heard about a couple other apartment complexes that might um just be less well-maintained than others by the the property owner. So those might be first places you would look to say, is this NOAA housing? And should we make sure we're working with the property owner to, first of all, make sure that it is well-maintained and safe housing for its residents, but also that we, you know, want to make sure that that type of housing is kept, is preserved in Oxford. Because it's much, I should say, the reasoning for that is because it's much cheaper to preserve what you have than to build new affordable housing.
So it could, it sounds to me as if there is a role for the city to play here in addressing needs of communities which are characterized as encompassing NOAA.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Is that?
Yeah. I would say, yeah. I would say, um, it's about working, making sure that they're, you know, up to code, that they're safe, that they're um well-maintained and that they, um, oftentimes NOAA developments are more prone because they are often um older developments, um, or they might have maintenance issues. They might be prone to redevelopment and a lot of times.
What kind of issues were those?
Um, they might, a lot of times NOAA developments are a bit older, which is why their rents are typically lower. They might not be maintained quite as well. Um, they might have absentee property owners.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
So you want to focus on those developments, preserving them, making sure that they don't redevelop and all the residents then are, um, you know, left without housing.
Okay, I'll just conclude by saying that you're talking about what the city mu- might do in order to hold these uh structures up to a higher level of of excellence. And if not excellence, of well-being for the tenant, for the tenants. So there's a, there's a role for the city to be proactive in this, yes?
That's, that's kind of what the purpose of including it in the plan is.
Okay, that fleshes it out. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, I might. And just really quickly, that was a great description. Part of the s- the logic is that a lot of times, when we're having this discussion, you're having this discussion about how does the city help build new affordable housing, that's definitely a need. But at the same time, thinking about public investment, it's also probably worth considering the public investment in helping maintaining the naturally occor- occurring affordable housing. What things can you do to help with energy efficient, efficiency? What can you do to help, help owners meet code and preserve what you have? So we're thinking about spending money on new product, which makes sense because we need more. We also be thinking about, sometimes that money can go even further, protecting what you already have and just helping reinforce it and get it back to where it needs to be to be a quality home. So it's not forgetting, the key is not to forget about the naturally occurring housing you already have in a quest to think about how to get new housing.
It's good that you brought our attention to it, but I I it needed a little bit of fleshing out in order to see really what the import of it. And you've done that, so that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, yeah, I just had a quick question, or I'm, I'm generally curious about the discussion around annexation. So one thing that, you know, we, because of the project scope, we didn't talk about is what would be the goal land uses, you know, in broad brushstrokes of the land that's outside of the study area, of the unincorporated area. Um, and I guess I was kind of wondering if you had recommendations about how we might begin those discussions or where we might start with that. Would we start by looking at the adjacent use in our comprehensive plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, I, I don't know that there's a necessarily a right order to do these things, but I would imagine that, um, especially given that Sam was able to meet with the township folks recently, that maybe a first um step would be to think about planning with the township, doing that, that recommendation to do a joint land use plan might be where I would start. Um, you know, in the meantime, if you, if there were to be an annexation request or rezoning, or I'm sorry, annexation requests, um, you know, maybe uh the future land use map doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, permanently static over the course of its ten-year life. Um, it can be updated. And if there were to be an annexation request that were to happen, we would probably want to think about updating the future land use map. And when you're doing that, you might, that's, that's when I would certainly look at, what are the adjacent land uses um for that specific site? Um, and yeah, that's it. It's a really good question, though.
No, that's great. And I think our ambition, or the way that that is handled in this document is, in terms of our um suggestions are good. So I think we'll just have to cross that bridge as we come to it.
Just, I I think the Oats Trail is such a fantastic amenity and a great thing that you all have come up with and continue to advance. Um, you know, thinking about that as kind of a green belt and how development could kind of filter that point or as new development happens or annexation happens, how, you know, there are some discussion with the township about where that oats trail or maybe that extension, but kind of continue to think about that as kind of a a transition between the city of Oxford and the township might be one way. And there may be places that are more logical and can be, one of the things you need to look at, have discussions as part of the future pieces, what can be served with water or sewer? How easily, what investment does it require? And so I think that helps also kind of point directions in places that make more sense, near-term versus long-term.
Is it, is it possible to mention a feature of this plan which is not yet ter- uh spoken of, uh but which is in praise of the plan? That is, will you accept this as a statement and not a question? Well, I wrote the following among other points that I made, which I'd like to advance just for everyone's consideration, which is one of the features of this plan that makes it special is that it is truly a regional examination. Uh, and I know I've been allowing long enough to see that lip service is often paid for that. I shouldn't say that, it's that's a, not a good phrase, but the idea is it's mentioned, it's called upon, it's suggested, but it's never even come close to mandated. Here, in this document, it says, quote, "Create a joint plan for land use and development with surrounding jurisdictions." And my reaction to that is, hooray. I mean, it's something that we've been wanting, I think, for some time, uh, which we haven't seen, which is really essential. And it's, it's uh something that's really needed, and I wanted to point that out. And uh congratulate you for mentioning that.
It's some, yeah, it's something that we heard a lot about. I know staff has been, um, you know, thinking about this idea for a long time, so. Yeah, and I should mention that we, for the future land use map, we did um stick to that urban, I'm sorry, we stuck to the um boundary that was used in the last plan. Um, but there is a lot of rural, um, just because we do want to be respectful of of neighbors, but that we would definitely encourage, um, to Commissioner Dana's point, that future, uh, joint future land use plan with the township.
Okay, other questions?
If I make one comment to you all, um, you know, this map is is really important for what you all do as development comes in, rezoning comes in, you know, this is your reference point. And as such, since you're kind of the the first line that really gets to see this and understand this other than staff, um, really love for you to make, to think about and take advantage of of our time here now. If there's things you don't agree with, or we haven't helped describe them enough that you feel comfortable, if you have concerns about something, if you're like, all right, we'll get to tonight, but I'm still not sure about that. I would much rather you all, we would much rather have you raise it now, let's have that discussion. This is your chance to say, you know, this doesn't make sense, for these reasons, we'd rather it be this. This is, this is the great forum to do that, and we can have a discussion, like, maybe that makes sense, maybe we should change something. This was our best interpretation, working with staff about what made sense using the character areas. But maybe fundamental places, if you agree with the character areas, that's great, that's a first turning point. Then the second place is then the application of the character areas on this map, because this is the, this is going to be stuff you're going to be asked to, along with staff, to really use this as a guiding guide.
I guess my question would be with the um employment quarter and employment center parts of the map, and is it specific, I, I see a little picture, but, you know, I just want to know, is housing included in kind of that plan? That you'll have that kind of area where there's going to be some maybe offices or retail or whatever and people living right by them? Is that?
Yeah, so, um, that's a good question. With the, we, with the employment corridor and I would say with the employment center, we, we do specify that a potential secondary use for those character types would be, you know, some limited multifamily residential. Obviously, that's going to maybe make more sense for certain sites than others, but.
Page is not, I'm so sorry, the one with the characteristics.
Page forty-eight.
I mean, there's also adjacent housing, so that might, there's a, if you go back.
There should be a plan for each of the land use.
Well, I just have this right for you.
That's the Kroger property, which I'd love to point out, you got rid of the banks.
Yeah.
And you had two outlined, so I think that's fabulous.
Yeah.
But um in that, if you look outside of the tri, all of that is housing around it, uh, to the south. And I mean, the U on the bottom is a hundred percent housing, so. And the same with the hospital, it's, it's this and with your.
Yeah, so there, what's existing, um, we've, uh, all the yellow on the map basically is existing housing. Um, so all these areas, which a lot of them are adjacent to some of those blue areas, the employment corridor, um, the employment center, so there's quite a bit of adjacent housing to those employment uses, if that's your question.
And actually Sam answered my question with the rest of the.
Oh, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Where, where all the, more of the information could have.
Correct, yes.
So I, I do have a question. It's not something I disagree with, uh, per se, um, but, well, I guess that was, I don't disagree with it in any respect. One thing we struggle with, and not from a planning standpoint, but I think from an infrastructure standpoint, uh, years ago in twenty seventeen, uh, one of the things I pointed out was if um that magical train just gets stuck, you have a twelve-minute around and you could literally, to get from the fire station to Kroger right now, it takes about a minute and ten seconds. Perfect storm, it could take fifteen minutes. So is the break between, if you look, the urban core, um, the pink area, the business center, and then, I mean, the reality is there's probably going to be something new made in chess, not with the multimodal coming onboard. Um, is there anything in the larger document that we should pay special attention to for continuity? Because right now, if you think about it, um, Collins and a few other streets just stop right at the rail tracks, going down the hill. And then if you're really clever, there is Collins on the uh goodwill side, it's just a size of football field. So we have a lot of natural existing barriers to continuity. Is there, is there any advice, direction on how to make that? Because if we're going to make it walkable, you know, I envision, and I I know, um, we've had discussions before, you can walk from uptown, down college, beach, any of those, end up at um Stewart Square. There's some connectivity. You go through, you know, different housing and all that. The employment center literally is over the hill and through the woods, the governor's house. And and so how do we address that from a planning, especially when, you know, we're very, very in touch with uh bikes, walking, buses, things of that nature? How do we address that?
That's a really good question. And um in addition to the truck route that goes through uptown, the rail road was the other major transportation barrier we, we know exists that we heard about is a problem. Um, there is a recommendation in the mobility chapter for a feasibility study for a grade-separated rail crossing. Um, what that looks like obviously would depend on the feasibility, the results of that feasibility study. But I think your point might be one about maybe knitting these roadways that are kind of stub streets or um that get kind of impeded by the rail line a bit more than maybe just a single grade-separated crossing and maybe thinking about, is that, is that right?
Yeah, if you're on one side of the tracks, you can go anywhere you want. If you're on the other side of the tracks, you can go anywhere you want.
Yeah.
And cross them, it's a whole different story.
So maybe it's focusing on not just one, but multiple points of crossing in the future, um.
And Dr. Prithrich said he was getting rid of the hills so I could ride my bike.
Okay.
Get you an e-bike.
I don't know that there is an easy answer to that question. Um in terms of, I guess, the land, the boundaries of the land use district. I think we probably paid a bit more respect to the existing streets than necessarily the rail line, though obviously you can see that a bit up here. Um and some of that is what's existing today. I, so I don't know that.
Well, and the reason, the reason I brought that up also too is in the pink area, I know that there is some talk, or, or there was some illustration of how we could possibly, being that is general business, have higher uh buildings. And I know there's been discussion of, of higher building heights in general. So the first thing I thought of is if you elevate the heights or permit higher uptown, and then you go to the transition to the neighborhood, and then the next thing you pop back up, there's almost a development valley. So just trying to think of how to mitigate that.
Yeah. And I think um with that pink around the South Locust corridor, you know, you've already kind of started to get at some of that with this, um, not Stewart Square, what's the Miami Preserve Development. Bishop Square, thank you. Um, and Stewart Square. And maybe we just think about continuing that. If these sites were to redevelop, continuing that same character. And I wouldn't categorize those as like, you know, I don't know your opinion, but I don't think they're out of character in terms of their height. But I see, I see your point that, yeah, there's this kind of area here, this transition zone between uptown and.
What are the advantages? Is Bishop Square sits about thirty feet lower than the one stories up on the hill, so they actually look the same height?
Yeah, that's true. That's topographic.
I'm just curious, I'll sit here with those members of the public, so I, if we could, at some point, transition to that, because I would love to hear from.
We have at least three hours.
Right, well, what, what struck me, I, I think is worth mentioning when it comes to this plan is in comparison with many plans or most plans that I've been acquainted with, is that various improvements have been noted as suggestions. And what we have here, what I read from the staff uh covering memo, was that they, because of the, of the clarity of the future land use map in particular, and the summary matrix, it's heartening to read that staff will embrace the future land use map in, in a more authoritarian manner. That is, I really look at this whole enterprise as being one in which the, in essence, what it is, is this is what we're going to do. So that I think marks this plan off from many plans in general. Is that true in your experience?
Yeah, I think um that was a big focus of especially the implementation chapter was thinking about how you all, how staff, how the rest of the city um boards and commissions can operationalize the plan, including the maps that are included in the plan too. And yeah, I think.
Well, it's, the city and staff are going to have this plan. All plans are meant to be a little flexible. And so I agree with you, and I guess what we encourage you to do is to take this as an authoritative reference. But if something comes up that makes a lot of sense, I think you should be okay entertaining that in the discussion with staff. But I would make sure you're also updating this or tweaking that piece of this map and this plan, because you want to continue to say that this plan has authoritative value. It's when a bunch of things get thrown out across time, and then people look at it like, well, this doesn't match anything you've done.
Right.
So we're not going to pay attention anymore, and you don't want that to happen.
And I know, uh, I should mention too, that staff ha- has already made the future land use map into an interactive map on the Oxford Tomorrow website. And I know that would probably be a great um life, you know, tool throughout the, the life of the plan too. And again, it could be continuously updated.
The other thing that strikes me too, is, is that the idea of this plan locking, much as you were saying, locking, interlocking with other efforts. Either those currently going on or not. I can think of South Twenty Seven as one, and where it has been studied. So that, that whole, that whole area I'm pointing toward is, is important for us to, to realize that there are these partners, nonprofits, profits, individuals, so forth, and they can really make things happen. Because it's not the city or us. It's all of these people diving in and doing the work themselves. Together. I know, it sounds like a pitch for us, but, but I mean, that's the way I see it. It's, it's, it's really quite inspirational to me.
That's great to hear.
I'll just close with a comment. Um, probably a year or two back, I think we just on the spot, flippantly, uh we were talking about alleys and alleyway access and all this stuff. And I I remember saying we should uh make pedestrian alleys. And when I read through this on page seventy-three, the Oxford Green Alley example. Thank you. So I was really happy to see that. I don't know how it made it in there, because it was just wispy comment that we were all talking about. But seeing that in there, I think that was, that was good, because I think that's a lot of the direction we're trying to go. So having that captured selfishly, I thought was very cool. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate uh your time. And um at this point, uh we can entertain uh any comments from folks in the public. And just remind them, if you have anything to say, please come up to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address, and uh just make sure I'm not mixing up my commissions. Uh the comments should be restrained to three minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Chris Scoglan. I live at two eleven Ryan Drive. Couple of things I just wanted to share with the planning commission regarding this. First off, having served as, on the steering committee and have sat through a number of the work sessions and so on, I actually applaud this plan and fully support what's being presented in here. It's something that's achievable. And doable, and I think leads to a strong future for Oxford going forward. I have a challenge to the planning commission on this. It's been said numerous times about, and we refer to some other documents and things that we've worked on recently, and recently being over several years. For this to be effective, it needs to be a living document. And not something we just reference about written down, put on a shelf, comes back. You look at just the history, two thousand eight, we did another one, what? Two thousand four. How many years has it been that, you know, David, you sit at the meetings and you wave, here's the comprehensive plan. I would encourage you as a planning commission to take on as your responsibility, your charge, is that you should be leading an effort that at least once a year, there'd be a session devoted where we look at this comprehensive plan and see what needs to be modified and updated and revisited, so that this thing does remain a living document. And I think that would then serve more purpose and show that it's being more responsive to the needs of Oxford. There were things put up on that map, the example being the airport. We don't know what's coming, but I'm sure whatever is coming needs to be reflected, because as you sit there on a council today, on the planning commission, at some point, your term will be up. This document can serve as a great document to carry forward, so that there is no interruption in the transition as you go from the existing commission, uh planning commission that's up there today, to one that's in place five years ago. Five years from now, se- you know, seven years from now, so. My last point I actually have is a personal uh thing for you to think about. And I was looking at the map. And I look in that one area, the future land use. And could you pull that up there for a second? And I'm probably going to call out heresy from my own neighborhood. Okay?
Perf- uh future.
Yeah.
Nope, go.
Nope.
Flip back a little. Western Knolls, pass mark. When you look around that area, it's predominantly all residential, whether it be Southern Knolls, Western Knolls, the area out toward the community park and so on. The one thing that I always find amazing is if you need something, you gotta go to Kroger. Okay? We made a major breakthrough this year. I hate to say it, when we opened up the, we put the Shell station in place down on Twenty Seven, it just serves as a convenience. And the thing that, for those people, instead of having to drive all that way, now, I'm not proposing that a gas station be considered and all that. But as you go forward, think about in terms of, as plans may come in for that area that has been sitting there and has always been sixty-four thousand dollar question, what do we do with this piece of land? As it is owned today, perhaps consider the opportunity that if they wanted a small retail store to be put in there. Some type of convenience store where you need a gallon of milk or something like that, it's a place to go. Rather than get in your car and drive up to Kroger or whatever. You've achieved that with the Shell station down off of Twenty Seven, for, you know, the annex and all those residents and everything basically south of Twenty Seven, on Twenty Seven. You've got glaring discrepancy up in that corner. There isn't anything near it and an opportunity. I'm not saying you got to open up another, you know, host, you know, Kroger marketplace or something like that. As things go forward, although that is, area is probably all zone today to be residential, perhaps consider it. And as you go forward with this plan, think about that in terms of how things are currently set up from a zoning standpoint. It's an opportunity to make some positive modifications to those plans and thinking about future use convenience. And uh I think long term, an improvement from a carbon footprint standpoint. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any?
Hi, uh this is my first time at a planning and commission meeting. Anne Fure, I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knolls. Um I speak as someone who is a faculty member at Miami University for thirty-nine years, benefited tremendously in terms of my professional experience and um my financial situation. Now I have a state teacher's retirement uh pension now, and we live very comfortably. I am wondering what the relationship is with Miami University and planning. And is this a plan for Oxford outside of Miami, or is there any joint planning with Miami? There's an elephant in the room here. There's an elephant in the room at the last city council meeting. Commissioner Blackmore, you talked about the importance of joint planning uh with uh townships and annexation plans there. And I certainly see that. Um the comment that was made at the last city council meeting was about how wonderful it was to come to an agreement with the townships about um compensation for fire uh protection and wishing uh that there was the same kind of collaboration with the university. Sarah, you made reference to um the market conditions that um exist in the Mile Square. I owned a home in the Mile Square for several years um before uh moving to Riley Township and now to Southern Knolls. And it's uh difficult to live in the Mile Square, given market conditions. Market conditions refers to uh student uh rentals and Miami's residency policy for its students. I'd be interested in hearing more about whether there is any joint planning with Miami University and whether any of this can go forward. I mean, not knowing what's going to happen at the airport. I, I hear all kinds of indications of that lack of um collaborative uh planning for the future of the entirety of, of the largest, uh you know, of the city and the largest employer. And it's distressing to me. And I say it again with uh acknowledgement that I personally, my family has benefited tremendously with that affiliation. So I'd like to hear that address, not necessarily right now or here, but um I've heard city staff talk about throw up their hands in the air, um you know, the market's controlled by the university. That to me is not a, a comprehensive plan for the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just um say a couple of things on this topic, and I, I definitely understand that concern. One, that um we had a number of steering committee members who were representatives from the university on the steering committee. So there was a university presence in this process. We also did four, we did host four stakeholder focus groups. Those were kind of uh formed around different topics. We did one on community needs awareness. One of those was with Miami University leadership. Um so we, you know, tried to engage them over the course of the project, um university leadership, um university staff. Um obviously, we have a, a lot of faculty, I think, who have participated in the process, being that they're residents and community members um of Oxford. So um there has been involvement, I would say, from the university in this process. You know, it is also difficult, being that it is a state. I, I don't probably have to tell you, tell anyone in this room, that's probably, but um you know, given that they do have authority over, you know, their campus and so we tried to, you know, still respect that authority on the future land use map and in the plan itself. But where we could, we also tried to find those points of um collaboration. So one of the, you know, we heard a lot about the Mile Square in this process and a lot about housing. Um and so one of the ideas, recommendations in the housing section was to reestablish a homeownership program to hopefully incentivize or enable university faculty and staff that want to live in Oxford to be able to live in Oxford, who we've heard, we heard um directly that, you know, it, it's an issue that there are Miami University employees who want to live here, but they can't because of the housing market. So encouraging, the city encouraging or working with the university to um potentially reestablish that type of program or those types of incentives would probably go a long way um in our eyes to address some of those mile square market conditions, which is you know, it is the reality, but it doesn't have to be the permanent reality if, you know, there is collaboration and on these policies and program recommendations that are um in the plan itself. So I don't know if there's any other
I will say that I find working with planning at Miami relatively opaque. And I find that frustrating. Again, there's a lot in their policy as it relates to land use and investment that is controlled by the state of Ohio and its decision making, you know. And I think that that puts us in a really difficult position. There's not a lot, you know, there's not always things that we can do to try to bring them to the table in, in a really pointed way on some of these things. You reap what you sow. So if you have an unaffordable housing market, it's really hard to find staff for certain kinds of projects. It's really hard to attract and create a community, for example, that can support a bookstore or that can support a movie theater. So um, you know, and then that leads to a slippery slope of divestment um in a less diverse community. And so, and it makes it an unappealing place for the kind of faculty that Miami wants to attract. So I don't have much to say beyond that, but it is a, it is.
Speak volumes with your, uh, your voice.
It is frustrating. It's frustrating.
So if I could just chime in on that, I mean, I, I think it's, there are so many points of intercommunication between the city and, and and so I think there's a dialogue that goes back and forth. I mean, the university, uh, I will say, the university does not have a comprehensive plan. Which is kind of weird. They do have a strategic plan that did involve a lot of community, a lot of community input in it. But I'm on the campus planning committee, and we kind of pointedly said, like, there's no physical master plan for Miami, not really updated since two thousand and three or something. They've declined to do that, but I think um we'll just have to keep talking about that, because I think it's, it's going to be hard for them to make the decisions they need to make. But that said, there's so many points of inner penetration in the. But that said, there's so many points of inner penetration in the conversations that are very collaborative that I think that, in the same way that I feel like our, we share a consensus, like, I think of town and gown, there's a shared consensus about what the values and goals are, even if some of the choices are hard. Um, but yeah, it's, I'm with Carla Stone Voice on that one too.
Any other members of the public want to, uh, speak to this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I so move.
All right, Mr. Dana, adjourn for public session.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we are back in our own.
So is this, can I make a motion that the planning commission recommends approval of the revised comprehensive plan?
I would like to second that.
Before I accept that and the second, I just wanna make sure there's no discussion or anything. Because the way we've traditionally done it was that was Q and A with the presenter and the, uh, public, so.
Yeah, so, okay, is that how we're doing it here? Because I typically think of it, the motion, the second, and then discussion, but however you wanna do it, it's fine.
Nope, I haven't done it that way for years. Uh, Ms. Rosenberg did have things that she had, uh, wanted to say, and at the advice of staff and others, she has requested to.
As long as you don't forget to vote. We don't, we made a motion and you seconded it, so it's fine, whether you discuss it before or after, doesn't matter.
Well, I didn't accept the motion in the second, so. Uh, we'll, we'll go with Ms. Rosenberg, and then we'll do the motion in the second, as, as proponent of this board.
Cool. Okay, so what I have to say is about housing. And, um, there is, I could be super dramatic, and I could take the page about housing and rip it and like, put it in front, that would be something super dramatic I could do. Um, to, to say that, as much as sustainability and climate and, and, and everything is so important, um, I just want us, as a group, to acknowledge that, that housing is one of the things that we have to plan for as a commission and help make happen as much as possible. So, I just wanted to say some words about that, um, here in the, um, plan that we're about to vote on. Um, a lot of things in the recommendations mention either HAC or a nonprofit. Um, they would be taking care of stuff like that in the recommendations. Um, I know I was very vague earlier in my report, because I am a little vague sometimes about housing, but, but, the, the commission, not the topic. But what is really exciting is that the city, um, is working on this nonprofit, um, that really, really will focus on the recommendations that are in this plan. Um, so Zach is gonna probably pop in at any second to kind of like, talk more about what I'm saying. Um, kinda, I'm, I'm kind of a thinker where things pop into my head, so a couple, three weeks ago, I said, Sam, I actually really wanna talk about the future land use map, and they're like, oh, cool, I wish you had said that like, three months ago instead of three weeks ago, but, um, but part of why I had asked about the employment quarters is, I feel like we have a really good opportunity um, to create some housing, to create some density for that housing. Um, first of all, near Walmart, where there has been a lot of land just lying there for quite a long time. I know that there is some infrastructure issues there, um, but there is a huge grocery store, speaking of, um, being able to purchase food easily and other amenities. Um, there's another little spot, um, and, and our map does, does allow for it, which is, um, we had a, um, spot in between Spark and Drive and what is now the aviary?
Mm-hmm.
Cool, got it right. Um, so that had been a spot that was talked about before, as far as like, market rate housing and I love info, and both of the things that I just said are actually info. So, um, what Zach is gonna pop in and say is, oh, Shawna just talked about changes, well, what can we do about that? So, Zach?
Yes, I'm happy to respond to that, um, very good points. So, um, I guess I could start with the land that is east from Walmart. Um, there is a pretty sizable parcel that is up there right now, um, and actually, I might grab the laser pointer while I'm at it. Yes, so, there is land right up in this vicinity right here, this is Walmart, right here. Um, there is quite a bit of undeveloped land back there, uh, it's a lot of acreage, it's undeveloped.
Point to it again, please.
It's right up here, just above where that twenty seven shield is.
I see it.
Um, and it's zoned general business right now, and per our existing zoning code, general business allows for commercial, commercial usage, no problem. When it comes to residential usage, there really is no permission whatsoever for any new residential usage in general business. Um, this plan is a, is a plan for the future, um, so I think the categories, the character types that we have are very forward-thinking. But another key recommendation of the plan is to eventually do some kind of modernization of our zoning code. Doing some reform so that the zoning code better aligns with the character types that are expressed in the plan. So there will be kind of this transition phase, probably, where there won't be the best of compatibility, shall we say, between these character types and the existing zoning districts that we have in our zoning code. But we'll do the best we can to kind of subjectively see, okay, looking at this map as an authoritative item, one that we value, one that we follow, um, is there consistency between this map and say, a potential future rezoning decision? Wherever it may be, if it happens to be at the land east of Walmart, if it happens to be, again, at the land that is, um, directly north of the aviary where we previously, uh, saw a rezoning request for a housing development. Um, we would be doing that analysis at that moment in time to see, okay, does the map, um, support the particular rezoning request that's at hand? Um, so when it comes to the categories that are shown on the map and to Ms. Rosenberg's point, um, if we had heard that comment three months ago, then there may have been an opportunity to maybe make some potential adjustments to the map and then reveal it to the community through the community engagement process to get some buy-in about those particular changes. But because that process has concluded, um, we feel it's probably a little too late to be making those kinds of adjustments to the map. I think, it's still, in theory, it might be possible through this formal adoption process, but I would, um, discourage that from happening, at least at this moment in time. Um, but to what Mr. Herman had, had pointed out, um, this is going to be an agile, living document, so we're not intending for this to be set in stone for the next ten years. This map can certainly change, and there will be a process to consider changes to it. Um, and one of those potential changes could be to maybe redesignate some of that land that's over there near Walmart from a category that largely supports commercial usage as kind of a primary use, maybe with a little bit of residential as a secondary. But if the vision is more for primary usage on a residential side and maybe a little bit of commercial mixed in, then maybe the future land use map doesn't necessarily support that vision upfront and maybe needs to be amended before entertaining some kind of re, a rezoning decision to su- support a development like that, so. Um, so yeah, again, this is gonna be, um, an agile, sort of living expression of the city's goals, of, uh, potential future outcomes when it comes to development decisions, and something that is definitely, um, amendable, flexible, malleable as we move forward into the future.
Well, and, and just to bring both of your points, the parcel east of Walmart is the one that was separated from the church property and is technically landlocked, and has access through a right-of-way, um, on the Walmart property. So, to your point, there, there's definitely more discussion that could and should be had about that, but also it just proves the point that without the land use map, uh, we already have a cart in front of us, a worse situation than we've dealt with. We made this, a decision based on the facts we had at the time, and now, looking back, I don't know if we made that same decision.
Well, but you know, given that an employment quarter, like, includes, like, I'm looking at a lot of residential right here that exists, so it doesn't seem to me like,
That's all the general business.
Right, but this is, see where it's an employment quarter, so. Um, so it seems like that doesn't even need to necessarily be changed, depending on the development, so.
I think, to some extent, it just, it really depends on what is the particular vision for that property? Is, is there an interested buyer or developer who has a vision for that site? Um, y- you know, there's a lot of factors that would play into it, and there's a lot of practicalities that play into development decisions that aren't just the future land use map, you know, there's all kinds of considerations, some of which are in, within the city's control and some of which are not. Um, things like topography, things like utility connections, access, um, any sort of agreements, legal agreements that may be in place. Um, private property owner considerations, you know, if property is owned by a private property owner, they largely can determine the destiny of that site. Um, and so those are factors where the city doesn't play a direct role in influencing them. But the future land use map is there as a guide to kind of help guide us as we make those future decisions as they arise. Um, wherever they may be.
Both of what you've said and what you have said with regard to the contingencies that have to be taken into consideration, I happen to emphasize, I happen to agree very warmly with what you've said, as a general principle, having housing being something which is of immediate nature, which I believe is the message you're conveying. To me, it makes sense, I just wanted to voice that because I think it is, it shines through the plan. So I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Paula Hart.
Could I just, one, I, I shared a little bit, Shawna's concerned, like, till I looked closer and realized, we have almost no single-use districts here. You know, in our previous, it was like, this was residential, that was almost everything, with the exception of Flex Industrial, has housing at least as a secondary use. So I started thinking like, oh, should we be redrawing the boundaries a little bit here? No, we don't really need to because the mile square includes retail, local, look, mile square includes local retail. Um, the commercial has housing in there, and so I think that we can get to the, It supports doing a mix of everything, most everywhere. Uh, so I think that's, it got me away from like, wanting to change the colors on things because I think there's still flexibility within it to find the right mix.
Well, and then the other, I always forget the name of the zone, the,
Thank you. Uh, What's that, so?
The neighborhood business.
Yes.
We approved, I don't know if it's still valid, but, um, at the corner of Sycamore and,
Morning Sun.
Morning Sun. Um, the northwest corner of that is designated as,
Correct.
You know, why they officially call it Spot Zone. But that, that also illustrates, uh, what Mr. Schober was talking about earlier, and, and what you're talking about is that next use, so. We want to see that developed.
So, I'm glad there's a mechanism for changes if we need it, we may not even need it, the colors might be really nice the way they are, right? And, um, but I just wanna repeat that with every decision that we make from now on, we just need to really think about housing, because everything stems from that, like, we're not gonna have a good economy, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have movie theaters and bookstores and, and all sorts of cool things that we could have if, if the people that work here were able to live here, so.
And I just wanna, on my hobby horse, I was part of the, um, I was part of the postmortem on the project that wasn't, didn't receive funding to do, um, affordable senior housing down on the Southern Knolls property. And it was really, um, I was part of, I, I got to hear a little bit of the postmortem of why that project was not funded, could not receive funding, did not score well. Um, and, and one, there's a lot of components to it, but one of the things that it lacks is transportation. There's not, you know, we could say, oh, we'll put in a specific dedicated shuttle, you know, but that's not the same as, it won't help you score better in a competition where you're competing for affordable housing. And so, as we think about, you know, especially our urban, urban neighborhood, do we call it, urban neighborhood? As we think about our urban neighborhood, um, to me, it once again underlines the importance of making sure we get that transportation plan updated um, and make sure that we have the pieces that will support our competitive competitiveness in the funding space for some of these projects. Um, we have a variety of challenges going up in a competition to win affordable housing dollars. Um, and it's, there's just a lot of challenges where that's concerned, but we can set ourselves up better with a transportation plan that works. And right now, we really are hamstrung by the way in which the twenty seven is cornered by the railway, by Care Road and its impassibility on anything other than a car. You know, we just have, we have some real issues where that's concerned, and to me, it's just like a puzzle and I wanna throw my hands up in the air because I get really frustrated with it, but, um, I, I would like, you know, as we, I almost wanna include it as a recommendation, is I approve this. You know, that we go and do that transportation plan that will get done into the weeds because without that, you know, a lot of these projects are just pie in the sky.
Hmm, so, point of order. I think that is a valid thing for, I'm glad you brought that up, there are things that we could recommend to city council. Yeah, with the potential adoption of, um, of this, or not adoption, recommendation of this. I mean, there are things that I think we could point out that, you know, are important to consider or, you know, should be emphasized more than others.
And, and with the, with the central transportation, I, if I may make a sort of special pleading, it's not only that some of these structures won't take place, it's for people of older generations whom I, that's want, want to be their primary mode of, of, of transportation. I know it's mine, and I feel it very acutely, so I will point that out because I believe it's something I feel deeply about and I happen to agree with the previous speaker.
I'm not seeing a whole lot of action, so I, I could,
Well, I, well, no, okay, well, can I, if we're doing it your way, yeah, so, comments, uh, shout out to all the comments, yes, on everything. Uh, Chris said, and, and Anne also, um, and so, uh, I really, I wanna start with the, the big picture things. If there are two changes that I wanna see in the plan, it's, one, this idea about the annexation and how it's used is really unclear to me, and I think that because we didn't talk about extraterritorial planning, the, the very first annexation, we're gonna, like, what is our process for doing this? And I think it may not be that hard because it seems to me, for, for a variety of reasons, it may just be that that medium density, newer, new, new tradition, will be the default way we annex residentially. So it may not be all that many choices, it seems like. But I think a little bit of language about how this plan could be used in the process of an annexation, because I think we're gonna have to codify that one way or the other, it's more, I see more clarity in your report than I see in the plan. Um, if we're really gonna firm it, use it as a firm document, everything outside the city is now coded rural. So if we're gonna hold to the plan, that would mean we would, we're, it's authoritatively rural, but I'm not sure, that's, so I think we might have a little language that carves out the exception for annexation, like, we've, we've not recategorized anything outside the city as other than rural, but that doesn't mean that's the future best disposition. Um, because I think our authoritative thing could box us into a corner when it comes to annexation. And also, I think if we have to amend the land use plan, like, we've had developers saying, oh, it takes really a long time to get something that it offers. If we have to amend our comprehensive plan before we do an annexation, just adds another. So we might as well start thinking about what the process and mechanism would be because I'm glad the process, the plan doesn't have that, uh, you know, I understand why we didn't do anything extraterritorial, but we're gonna have to figure it out, so it sounds like you're thinking about it.
Regional.
Yeah, so, and then the other thing that I would love to see is that, I love the implementation, kind of, the timeline, the wheel, um, which I think is really great. Uh, the one changer that I, I would, hopefully, we at least think about is that what's very new about this is we're trying to bring the comprehensive plan to bear on the budget, which in my experience has not been the case in Oxford. There was a comprehensive plan that the planning commission used, and then council and staff came up with a budget based on, it's a separate set of priorities. So we've really done a good job of twerking this over to focus on, on the budget. But I think there's a missing piece in here, which is sometimes policy development doesn't necessarily always take a budget. You know, like, part of what I see in there is, we might have that retreat at the beginning of the year, and then the planning commission could work on policy adoption. Um, you know, I don't see boards and commissions necessarily in that wheel, and, and some of the best things that have come into the city have been generated from boards and commissions and, and sometimes in the absence of dollars. Um, we just do it with sweat equity. So anyway, that's just a thought about the plan stewardship, that we think about how we can think about that model because I guess I would just say that I believe in plans, but I believe in implementing them even more. And, um, one, aside from, And one, aside from all this, this has been a wonderful process of engaging the public. But behind the scenes on council, we've been trying to do a better job of like thinking about developing strategic planning models and reporting on annual, I mean, all these things that are kind of relatively new to us. They're not that new to other organizations, but they're kind of new to the city of Oxford. And now we have a comprehensive plan, it's gonna come in and really gonna start driving that a lot more. And so I guess I would just end by saying that, you know, this is just the end of the beginning and, and the beginning of the end. It's gonna take us years of work to start working through all these different things. We're gonna have to really stay on that, eye on the prize the whole time, but, but you have to start with the plan and that's why I really wanna thank fellow counselors who supported the money to do it, staff for, for seeing it through. It's been an incredible investment of time and you can just see it in the quality. MKSK, it's been really awesome to have people who know our community come back and help shape its future. And then all that, like eight hundred people who participated in this. It's really affirming and now it's like, it's our job to figure it out, how to implement it. So we gotta work on that first. So thank you.
Well, I know some of this is probably not necessary to be included in a, a motion and approval because, I mean, the mechanisms are needed, expected in, in motion. But I think, I think one thing that needs to be decided, agreed upon, acted upon, whatever action you want, is there needs to be delineation of who does what. So in that graphic I saw, the city council will do a retreat and all that. Does the city need to decide if the city council tells everyone what to do and then we just go do it? Or if this is actually community-based and the boards and commissions feed upward? So when I.
Or all?
It's both, yeah. Hopefully it's both.
Well, I, I think it is the circle, but I, I sit there and I think of the environmental commission has people with expertise who should be sharing, feeding, you know, planning commission. I know definitely on HAPC, if you ever read the requirements, you know, there, there, it's one of the only boards and commissions that regularly allows a non-resident to be a part of it based on expertise. So I, I think we need to make sure that there is that symbiotic relationship where, and the reason I say that is exactly what Anne said, is being on county boards and being on city commissions, I see the disconnect. Mr. Moore, I've heard about it more than I ever need to want to hear about it. But, but you know, you, you can see these things. So if, if we could work on timetables and responsibilities, I think, I think the process that was done for this was, was impactively executed. I thought it was timelines and, and what went wrong and how was just very methodical. So if we could kind of keep that spirit so that council knows what people are doing and when they should expect it and vice versa, I think that, again, it's not something we legislate, but I think that really needs to, that momentum needs to stay because otherwise I think we could very quickly get into a delay game or, or right-hand, left-hand again.
But just to point out that one area which I believe Dr. Pritchard pointed out with respect to plans. You said the university does not have one. Isn't that what you said?
Not of the kind, not the way we think of them.
Yeah, right.
You, you said that very much like that. And therefore, when you speak about the relationship, the first thing that goes on my mind is, and I'm not asking it to be addressed now, obviously, is how are you gonna do that? What are you gonna do completely enough to make that happen? Because without that, excuse me, it's not gonna work that well.
But that's our sphere of influence that we can.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
So this is my third comprehensive plan going back to ninety eight. And this plan, you know, is head and shoulders above the two thousand and eight plan. It's light years above the ninety eight plan. The implementation guide and things in the back make it so far ahead of everything else. You know, it's a, it's a virtual roadmap of everything we embody and wanna do and accomplish. And kind of where I'm going with this, I'm, I'm hearing that maybe this board maybe should have a little goal-setting work session on what we wanna work on aside from our regular cases. And that maybe out of that will come some recommendations to council, like, hey, we need to do revise the transportation plan, which I don't even wanna get into what a can of worms the last one was. Maybe we've, we can, I, I may be the only one who remembers and we can maybe learn from it. But, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of what we accomplished in this, this document, even though it was a struggle to get there through the pandemic and a, a lot of, of, thanks to David going, hey, Mike, we need to work on the comprehensive plan. I was like, you're right, we do. And just Olo and Doug, we needed, we need to figure this out and, and Sam and Zach and, and their staff, so. And MKSK, I appreciate all your expertise, so I'm, I'm very happy with where we're at, so.
It's amazing, Mr. Smith, today, the planning is definitely something Mr. Perry and I have discussed. I think we're just waiting for a way to generate. That is definitely on their radar.
So where do we stand?
Now you entertain my vote, all are. I would entertain a motion that we recommend to council approval of the Oxford tomorrow comprehensive plan update. As well as all supplementary staff materials.
Two.
Okay.
You can keep a second. All right, do you want to roll? Sure.
Sure.
Yes, well, we gotta get an ending. Mr. Perry or Mr. Moore, whichever one of you.
All right, I will start with Mr. Dana.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Prithrich?
Yes.
Ms. Blackbar?
Yes.
And Mr. Watt?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. All right, with that, technically the next thing on our agenda is adjournment, so unless there's any burning issue that we may have missed in the agenda, I'll accept a motion. I knew you were gonna do that. So Ms. Rosenberg with the win and Mr. Dana with the silver. With that, we are adjourned.